Heavenly Father, we come before you just asking, Lord, that you give us guidance and direction. Lord, we ask for all your blessings in your son, Jesus' name, we pray, amen. Can we have a moment of silence for Judge Harkin, who was our Hammond City Judge, who will be deeply, deeply missed from the entire city of Hammond? Rest in peace, Judge Harkin. Thank you.
Okay, Carmen roll call.
Markovich.
Yes.
Vitale?
Yep.
Benaz?
Here.
Calwinski?
Here.
Torres?
Here.
Higgs?
Here.
Emerson?
Here.
Rayco?
Here.
Oh Pinker?
Here.
Moving on to presentation of Council Scholarships Award, awards, Mrs. Myrick.
Well, thank you for having me here again this evening, and I just have to lighten the mood a little bit. I have a new secretary this year, so, you know, I was so used to my former secretary, and she just took care of everything, right? So, I go to pick up everything to bring tonight and realize that my secretary hadn't typed up a list of names, so I want you to know, I got her at the midnight hour, because I know how you like to have those lists in front of you. So, if I made any spelling errors, it was because I was trying to use my speed typing class from high school and type everything up for you like in fifteen minutes, but you got it, and I got here, and I'm so glad, but I'm so glad. I always like to leave and go places early and get there in plenty of time, so it gave me, gave me time to get these lists typed up, so. Janet and I have been working closely together, because Janet is picking up more of it and feeling that this is a council scholarship, and so, on their, year end, you've been doing a little bit more this year, and she sent out the scholarships, but I told her, anything she needed from my office, we would continue to help and support her in any way, and if she feels that this isn't working and likes the old way better, we can go back to the old way. Whatever your pleasure is, we're there to help and serve, because I think this is a great opportunity for our kids in Hammond, and I'd like to see them continue to get this and to support our kids in Hammond, so. With that said, I do have all the names, and what we're going to do is, you've got your list, and if one of you wants to come up at any time and help me with the drawing for your school and your district, I would be glad to have you. The first group we're going to do is Bishop Noel, and Bishop Noel had ten applications altogether, and they will get two, or one scholarship, based on the number of graduates they have, and then we'll pull two alternates, at least, for each school, just in case that person doesn't, doesn't show up.
Amber Williams.
So, she'll be the scholarship winner?
Who is it?
Who is it?
Who is it?
Amber Williams.
Amber Williams.
She heard the name on the.
She's on the last, under Bishop Noel.
Williams, Amber.
Okay, and then we'll pick two alternates.
Victoria Kielman.
Okay, she's our.
Victoria Kielman. And the last one, Cody Greenwall. Cody Greenwall.
Those we'll keep out since they're our winners, and these I'll put back. Thank you. Okay, one for Hammond. And Clark has three scholarships, and we'll draw two alternates. We'll draw three, five. Pedro Alvarado is our first scholarship winner.
Pedro.
Pedro Alvarado. Esmeralda Cibayos is our second scholarship winner. Jaslyn Perez is our third winner. Now, we'll pick two alternates. Elizabeth Palacios is our first alternate, and our second alternate is Abel Murillo. So, we have Pedro Alvarado, Esmeralda Cibayos, and Jaslyn Perez are our three winners, and then our alternates are Elizabeth Palacios for the first one, and then Abel Murillo. We don't get them mixed up. Gabit had fourteen applicants, and they will have three scholarships, whoops, wrong page. They had seventeen applicants, and they'll have two scholarships and two alternates. Our first scholarship winner is Benjamin Turpin. And our second one is Jada Stevens. Okay, now we want two alternates. Carlos Ocasio is the first alternate.
What's that one?
Ocasio.
Carlos.
Carlos.
First alternate.
Is the first alternate, and our second alternate is Larexi Salas. So, we have Jada Stevens and Benjamin Turpin are our two scholarship winners. Our first alternate is Carlos Ocasio, and our second alternate is Larexi Salas. Go on to Hammond High. Okay, Hammond High School, we have three scholarships and two alternates. Draw. Mix those up good. Okay, the first one scholarship is Destiny Flores. Destiny Flores is our first scholarship winner. Our second winner is Brian Barasa. Third one is Deshae Brown. Now, we'll pick our alternates, two of them. We have Tassiana Burks is our first alternate, and our second alternate is Diana Gill. Okay, next we'll do Haas. Nobody wants to go, go ahead. Haas had thirteen applicants, they get one scholarship winner and two alternates. Hey, there you go. Sure.
Victor Lopez.
Okay, he's our scholarship winner then, now we need two.
Who was it?
Victor Lopez is our scholarship winner for Haas. And then our alternates?
Nicole Lett.
Okay, that's alternate number one, Nicole Lett, L-E-T-T. And then our second alternate?
Breanna Ford.
Okay, thank you. And Morton had twenty-seven altogether. I know it says twenty-eight on there, but I went through them and double-checked, and there was one application that was copied twice, so they actually had twenty-seven. But it's based on how many students are in the graduating class to determine how many scholarships, so they get five scholarships, and we'll do three alternates for them, since they have more scholarships.
Five scholarships.
Mm-hmm.
Justin Myers.
Okay, Justin Myers is our first winner.
Haley Delgado. Maurice Weldon.
What was that one?
Maurice Weldon. Aviance Roberts. Bertha Andrade.
Okay, so those are our five scholarship winners, Justin Myers, Haley Delgado. Maurice Weldon, Aviance Roberts, and Bertha Andrade. Now, we need three alternates.
Tomar Mantado.
What's that one again?
Tomar Mantado.
Starts with a M? Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Alicia Cervantes. Jessica Figueroa.
Okay, so our three alternates are Tomar Mantado, Alicia Cervantes, and Jessica Figueroa. Thank you. And I'll be in touch with Janet to make arrangements to be here.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do all of these kids live in Hammond?
Yes.
Well, I mean, no, because a lot of the kids, since that new law changed, you don't have to live in a district to go to school there, so.
Right, and these, their enrollment that we go by is based on those that live in Hammond, so.
Hey, thank you, Mrs. Myrick.
Thank you so very much.
Moving on to reading.
And I'll take this with me, and then we'll talk.
Thank you.
Moving on to reading of minutes. Councilman Vitale.
Most accepted minutes from April eleventh, two thousand sixteen.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Vitale, second by Councilman Emerson on acceptance of the minutes. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes passed. Moving on to approval of claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich. Move for approval of claims, April sixth through April twentieth, for council meeting, April twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen, beginning with claims dated four, eight, sixteen, and ending with claims dated four, twenty sixteen. Claim number two-two-nine-zero through claim number two-five-nine-seven, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs on acceptance of the claims. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Mark.
Several additions. Claim number two-five-nine-eight, three thousand five hundred, Canis Testing and Engineering for Harrison Geotechnical Exploration for Harrison Park Improvements Phase Two. Claim number two-five-nine-nine, Thomas N. Vukalik, Patrick D. Collins, thirty-five, forty-five Ranger Parkway, Zeriffolis, Florida. Parcel number ten for Chicago Street Project, fifty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-six cents. Doesn't say what the address is here on this claim, so.
Goslin Street, uh, Chicago.
Well, I mean, it says Chicago, but is there a street or an address number?
Councilman Dean Button, um, I do have a reference to that, I don't have that with me now, but these are all in Phase One, which are basically Goslin Street from State Line to Sheffield.
I, I understand it, but we probably should have the house numbers on these, on all of these claims.
Okay.
Um, okay, and then the next one is claim number twenty-two-six-zero-zero, Peoples Bank, Mortgage Loan Department, ninety-two oh-four Columbia Avenue, again, Chicago Street Project, ten thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. Uh, claim number two-six-zero-one, Lake County Treasurer, twenty-two ninety-three North Main Street. I guess they're saying it's for the taxes on this, though, but one eighty, one hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-six cents.
We're, we're closing on property acquisitions, and a portion of the funds go to the homeowner or the property owner, and, and the property owner has tax effect on the sale, so we also have to pay Lake County.
I got a question, though, on our claim list, there's several other pieces of property. Do all of those claims have the addresses on their claims, or no?
They, they do not, I'm look, I'm looking them up now, it's, it's going to take me a little bit of.
Well, I mean, you know what, just go through, but you know what, I, I would like a copy of the listing of all the parcels with the addresses and the names then, and then with the price, if you do a spreadsheet.
I'll be, I'll be happy to.
That'd be the easiest way.
All of that information to you, sir, yes, be glad to.
Okay. Claim number two-six-zero-two, Lake County Treasurer, twenty-two ninety-three North Main Street, Crown Point. Again, parcel number eleven, fourteen dollars, thirty-six cents for taxes. Claim number two-six-zero-three, Eric D. Escalamala, one fifty-six Goslin Street, Hammond, Indiana, Chicago Street, twenty-nine dollars and nineteen cents. Just because that says, that's where the money's going, but that doesn't necessarily mean that that's the, the address of the, the house. This check is being mailed to that address, one fifty-six Goslin Street.
If you bear with me, sir, I can give you those.
Well, I, no, I don't, that's fine, don't worry about it now, but we'll go through this, because, you know, we'll get that later on. Twenty-six zero-four, Lake County Treasurer, again, looks like back taxes. Four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and four cents. Claim number twenty-six oh-five, Mel F. Emerson, two oh-two Goslin Street, again, Chicago Street pra, uh, Project, one thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty-one cents. Twenty-six zero-six, Lake County Treasurer, again, back taxes or parcel taxes, five hundred and fifty-two dollars and thirty-six cents, I so move.
Second.
Is a motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs on the amended version of the claims, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I just seen on the claim list, there are two claims being paid to the same persons from Human Relations, that's twenty-three fifty-seven, to Ann Hubbard, and twenty-five ninety-four. I just had a question on that, can somebody explain, Heather, can you explain that? I have the claim number, page number, just looking at these other claims. All the way in the back. No, everybody gets two hundred dollars, but it says Human Relations twice. Twenty-three fifty-seven and twenty-five ninety-four. Find it, Heather.
I, I see them both.
You know, I. I know you deal with a lot of money. If you look on page nine.
That's payment for their meeting fee, so it could have been two separate meetings that she was in attendance for.
Do they, do they meet once a month or twice a month?
I'm making, trying to remember. Um, I believe it's typically once a month unless there's an issue.
Yeah, three, actually, it's three claims, she's getting paid three times, twenty-three fifty-seven, twenty-four sixty-six, CBG, and then twenty-five ninety-four, Human Relations,
CDBG is not part of the Human Relations budget, that's what these.
Right, but I'm saying twenty-three fifty-seven and twenty-five ninety-four are the two claims from the Human Relations.
Right, and that's the amount of money that they would get paid for.
I know they get paid two hundred dollars a meeting, but I'm wondering why two claims are on the same list in, in the same month.
It looks like everybody is getting that double pay, double payment, so it must have been two separate meetings. If you, if you turn the page, you'll see, um, Mr. Mullins at twenty-three sixty-two, where's CS's check, and then if you go towards the back again, Mr. Mullins as well, so it looks like there was, maybe there was an issue with submission of claims for the meeting, so there might have been two separate dates, I'll take a look at it real quick for you.
I don't see, Mr. Cheeks is also a board member, I don't see him on the list, so I don't know.
I think it looks like this was labeled incorrectly, this is the College Round Exceptions Committee, so it comes out of the same budget, other Human Relations budget. And this is for the HHRC meeting, and it's four-six-six, so it's only for two separate meetings, forty, eighteen, and four-six.
Do you second, do you want me to go again for?
They were, they were twenty-five ninety-four, is for, is out of the same budget on this kind of, but it is for the College Round Exceptions Committee meeting, first one on April eighteen, and the fifty-two, or, sorry, the twenty-three fifty-seven is for Human Relations, first meeting on April eighteen.
So, they're two separate meetings.
Two separate meetings.
Any other discussion? Carmen roll call vote on the claims as amended.
Markovich?
Yes.
Vitale?
Yes.
Benaz?
Yes.
Calwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Higgs?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rayco?
Yes.
Oh Pinker?
Yes, claims, amended claims passed, nine-zero. Now the claim is written, Carmen roll call vote.
Markovich?
Yes.
Vitale?
Yes.
Benaz?
Yes.
Calwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Higgs?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rayco?
Yes.
Oh Pinker?
Yes, claims passed, nine-zero. Moving on to public hearing, there is none, next will be communications.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Mayor's night I will be held in the third district, the district which I represent, on April twenty-seventh at Maywood Elementary School, and it starts and takes place on Wednesday at six-thirty to eight-thirty P.M.
Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Fire safety, the American Red Cross of Northwest Indiana, along with the support of the Hammond Fire Department, is sponsoring Hammond Presentation and Safety. The local fire department and volunteers of the American Red Cross and Cavities neighborhoods in the city of Hammond or surrounding communities will be installing free smoke alarms in homes to keep families safe. If you're interested and would like to have up to three free smoke alarms installed in your home and receive free prepar, prepar, preppiness information to keep your family safe, please contact American Red Cross of Northwest Indiana, Safe Communities, Safe Families, American Red Cross Northwest Indiana, seven ninety-one East Eighty-third Avenue, Airville, Indiana, four-six-four-one O.
Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
As we all know, uh, we lost Judge Harkin on Friday, and from what I understand, there will be a wait on Wednesday at Solon's Funeral Home in Shererville from two to eight. That was a text message I received from one of the family members.
Any other communications? Communications is now closed. Moving on to committee reports.
President.
Councilman Vitale.
Councilor Holby bringing out sixteen dash fourteen.
Any other committee reports?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Benaz.
Yes, I would like to read a list of the upcoming community and crime watch meetings in the city. On Wednesday, May fourth, Edison Community Watch will meet at Edison School, six-thirty P.M. Thursday, May fifth, Edison Community Watch on the Road will meet at the Golden Manor Senior Apartment Building on the corner of one hundred and seventy-fifth and Columbia at one P.M. On Friday, May sixth, Irving Community Watch will meet at Irving School, uh, nine fifteen A.M. On Wednesday, April twenty-seventh, Jefferson Crime Watch will meet at Jefferson School at six-thirty P.M. And Tuesday, April twenty-sixth, Pulaski Park Neighborhood Association will meet at the American Legion on Goslin at six-thirty P.M. And that is how change happens, one gesture, one person, one moment at a time. Thank you.
Any other committee reports?
Mr. President.
Councilman Rayco.
Under new and unfinished business, we're going to bring out sixteen dash fifteen.
Any other committee reports? Committee reports is now closed. Move to ordinance, third and final passage.
Sixteen fourteen, an ordinance creating a new fund, fund number two-seventeen, for the city of Hammond Police Department, for video recording fund.
President.
Councilman Vitale.
Final passage of sixteen dash fourteen.
It's a motion by Councilman Vitale, second by Councilman Calwinski for final passage of sixteen fourteen, is there any discussion?
President.
Councilman Vitale.
This is a new fund, will be put in place for purchasing cameras and other equipment for the police department.
Any other discussion? Carmen roll call vote on sixteen fourteen.
Markovich?
Yes.
Vitale?
Yes.
Benaz?
Yes.
Calwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Higgs?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rayco?
Yes.
Oh Pinker?
Yes, ordinance sixteen fourteen passes, nine-zero. Okay, that concludes final passes of ordinances, moving on to introduction of ordinances, there are none, next will be resolutions.
Sixteen R-ten, a resolution authorizing the Hammond Police Department to apply for a crash reduction grant for two thousand and sixteen.
President.
Councilman Vitale.
Final passage of sixteen R-ten.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Vitale, second by Councilman Emerson for final passage of sixteen R-ten, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I'd like to be added as a sponsor of this ordinance, I mean, resolution, excuse me.
Did you add Councilman Higgs as a sponsor to that? Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Vitale.
The city of Hammond must apply for this grant to be awarded, asking for forty thousand dollars, if it is available, not saying that they'll get the full amount. Uh, the project, project will focus on repair driving during the prescribed dates, will focus on DUI checkpoints. This is a continuation also of a grant that was granted a year ago for traffic picking on eighty-ninety-four.
Any other discussion? Carmen roll call vote on sixteen R-ten.
Markovich?
Yes.
Vitale?
Yes.
Benaz?
Yes.
Calwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Higgs?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rayco?
Yes.
Oh Pinker?
Yes, sixteen R-ten passes, nine-zero.
Sixteen R-eleven, a resolution authorizing the entry by the Hammond Redevelopment Commission into an installment contract and taking certain other actions related thereto.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rayco.
Has the motion passed, resolution sixteen R-eleven?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Rayco, second.
Motion by Councilman Rayco, second by Councilwoman Vanez, for final passage of sixteen R eleven, is there any discussion? Any discussion?
Call for the vote.
Carmen roll call vote.
Markovich?
Yes.
Batali?
Yes.
Vanez?
Yes.
Kalwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Hig?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rayco?
Yes.
Oh Pinker.
Yes, Resolution sixteen R eleven passes nine zero. Now the next five resolutions will be put together as one vote.
Sixteen R twelve, a resolution appointing Richard Batali to the building contractors board. Sixteen R thirteen, a resolution appointing Ron Lubis to the electrical contractors board. Sixteen R fourteen, a resolution appointing George Patista to the electrical contractors board. Sixteen R fifteen, a resolution appointing Robert Garcia Junior to the HVAC contractors board. Sixteen R sixteen, a resolution appointing Ron Tatso to the HVAC contractors board.
Councilman Kalwinski.
Move for final vote, two votes, of sixteen R twelve, fifteen R thirteen, sixteen R fourteen, sixteen R fifteen. Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Higgs, for final passage of sixteen R twelve, sixteen R thirteen, sixteen R fourteen, sixteen R fifteen, and sixteen R sixteen, is there any discussion? Carmen roll call vote.
Markovich?
Yes.
Batali?
Yes.
Vanez?
Yes.
Kalwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Hig?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rayco?
Yes.
Oh Pinker.
Yes. All five pass, nine zero. Moving on to new and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I wanted to personally applaud Mr. Button and his way of running the engineering department. I have never seen someone so efficient in my life. I really, really appreciate your efforts in trying to get things done in the city of Hammond, and with your phone calls and returning phone calls and just being on top of things and trying to get the projects done, I really, really, really appreciate you, thank you so much.
Any other new and finished business?
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
I got two things I wanted to cover, first off, I wanted to list the council, though, I've already talked to you individually, and I know there's people watching on GoHammond TV, but Hillary Clinton is coming to Hammond, Indiana tomorrow around noon, she's coming to Munster Steel, as we all know, that's the business that we relocated, we worked with, we gave incentives to, and they relocated from Munster into Hammond, she will be here tomorrow afternoon, it's confirmed, the Secret Service is in charge, and, you know, there's gonna be a lot more requests to see her than there's gonna be spots available. It's not like a big rally like she did eight years ago, it's not a civic center, this is a real small, sort of like, the media's gonna be there, a small group, so if a councilperson's interested, I need to hear from you ASAP, and there's still no guarantees that I can get people in, I'll try my best, though. But she will be here tomorrow afternoon, hundred percent confirmed. That's the first order of business, I don't know if anybody has any questions about that? Okay, great, second order of business is, in light of Judge Harkin's untimely passing, I wanted to let the council know that we've already made contact with the governor's office, who ultimately will appoint a judge that serves for the remainder of this term, 'cause that's how it works when judges pass away, they're filled by the governor, not by the caucus, so the Democratic Party in Hammond will not be filling that seat, I wanted to make that clear. Secondly, Attorney Cantar has made contact with the Indiana Supreme Court, and Justice Rucker, who's a Lake County native, is aware of the situation, he knows how busy the Hammond City Court is, and I think what we'll see is a temporary judge appointed relatively quickly, that temporary judge will be there until Governor Pence ultimately makes his decision about who will be the Hammond City Court Judge. Okay, so I want to thank Attorney Cantar for making quick contact with the Supreme Court, I'm in discussion with the governor's office as we speak, and the governor's probably not gonna be in a real big hurry to fill that spot, I imagine it could take five or six months. It may go quick, but I doubt it, to me, it seems like they're in the process of taking in applications for future city judges. I asked them to make sure it's a Hammond resident, 'cause there's no requirement that he'll appoint, Governor Pence will appoint a Hammond resident, and obviously, that would be a bad precedent, considering our stance is on residency. So I asked the governor to keep that in mind, that we're really big on that in Hammond, and we have a lot of attorneys that live in Hammond, and he's got plenty to choose from, so... I don't know if anybody has any questions about that, okay, councilman? What's that?
If he loses.
Governor Pence, well, he can appoint before he loses, and he can appoint up till he's not governor anymore. So is there lame duck laws with regard to governor? He can appoint till December thirty-first regardless, if he wins, then, but even if he loses the election, he can still appoint, and we have to live with that appointment, his decision, Governor Pence's decision.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Mayor, I only have one question in regards to that, I've read the state law, I'm just wondering, does that person have to be a Hammond resident?
That's what I was talking about, councilman, no, in fact, other city courts have appointed judges, our own Attorney Cantar was appointed to fill a term in Lake Station, and as we all know, Attorney Cantar lives in Hammond, so no, he could appoint a Republican from another city to be our city court judge, absolutely true. I am asking, like I said, that's why I'm reaching out to the governor, asking him to please, you know, Hammond's a city that believes very much in residency, we have a number of attorneys that live in our city, instead of being a party person, I hope you think about residency, you know, and quite frankly, it's probably gonna be a Republican, 'cause that's Governor Pence's local party, and I imagine he's gonna probably appoint a Republican to fill the rest of the term, 'cause when judges pass away, the governor could do what they want. Any other questions? I know that there's a lot on our mind, and I haven't heard anything about Judge Harkin's funeral arrangements or visitation or anything, I know councilman just mentioned something, but I just want everybody to know there's a lot of stuff going on, and that's a super busy city court, as we all know, and it's imperative that we get leadership at the helm. Judge Harkin, before he passed away, appointed a temporary judge, and that temporary judge is currently the quote-unquote temporary judge, but upon Judge Harkin's death, that temporary judge is not really the appointed temporary judge, it has to be done by the Indiana Supreme Court, right? Right, so when Judge Harkin passed away, his order of a temporary judge also went with him, so right now, we're sort of, the city court is sort of a ship without a helm right now, and once Indiana Supreme Court takes action and appoints a temporary judge, that'll be in effect until Governor Pence makes his decision. And that could be six months, it could be a year, it could be a lot of different scenarios. And I will keep you in the loop, obviously, this is the first time I've ever dealt with a judge, a city court judge's untimely death, we've dealt with issues with regards to council members, and we know the Democratic Party takes precedence in those cases, but when a judge passes away, it's the governor's decision. Any other questions?
Hey, thank you, mayor. Any other new and finished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I got an issue on Becker Street, nine twenty-eight Becker Street with the cats, and I've sent several letters, and animal control rode by the houses of the neighbors on both sides, one happens to be Councilman, for the Second District, I can't even, I've lost my sense of thought, these cats drive me nuts. Councilman Torres is, which happens to be his sister that lives next door to the cats, and they are literally driving them nuts. If I can get some assistance, mayor, since you're here tonight, if you can assist me with addressing the cat issue, I would, it would be greatly appreciated, because they are like thirty or forty of them, and the neighbors are literally going crazy, please. So I'm requesting another letter be sent to the animal control, and hopefully, they can put some cages there and get the cats.
It's a motion by Councilman Higgs, just sending a letter to animal control regarding the cats on, was that Becker Street?
Yes, nine twenty-eight.
Nine twenty-eight Becker, all those in favor? Opposed, motion granted.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rayco.
Make a motion for final passage and adoption of ordinance sixteen dash fifteen.
No, we're on new and finished business, this is where it's at, this is where it's at. There's a motion by Councilman Rayco for final passage of sixteen fifteen, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Higgs, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
What is sixteen fifteen, can you read it?
Sixteen fifteen, an ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the city of Hammond for zoning purposes and amending ordinance number eighty-five fourteen, an ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the city of Hammond, including the regulations and maps to administer the zoning plan in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, as amended, for property commonly known as thirty-one oh seven Cleveland Street.
Any other discussion? Carmen roll call vote on sixteen fifteen.
Markovich?
Yes.
Batali?
Yes.
Vanez?
Yes.
Kalwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Hig?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rayco?
Yes.
Oh Pinker.
Yes, ordinance sixteen fifteen passes nine zero. Any other new and finished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I'd like to just announce Title One and Head Start, free preschool, Hammond residents only who have a child that will be four years old by August first, twenty sixteen. This Thursday, April twenty-eighth, is where you regi- when you register, from twelve to six P.M. This is for next, next school year, twenty sixteen seventeen, the school, city of Hammond Administration Building, forty-one Williams. You must bring the child's birth certificate, child's social security card, shot records, and two forms of residency. You can call nine three three two five one four with any other questions, but it is this week, and that's, that's why I wanted to get it done tonight.
Any other new and finished business?
Mr. Chairman, Councilman Markovich. Sometimes in everybody's life, you have certain dates that you always remember and you never forget, and back in December, December thirteenth, we had a council meeting that night, and that was the same day that my mother passed away in nineteen eighty-three. The ironic thing is, today is April twenty-fifth, twenty sixteen, and it was twenty-one, forty-one years ago that my father died on this date, so I mean, it just, you never forget about dates, especially when your parents pass away, and I just wanted to make note of that, thank you.
Any other new and finished business? New and finished business is now closed. Moving on to public expression, first speaker of the evening, T.L. W. Cross, senior.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies, happy to see that you all allowed me to express my opinion tonight. A couple of days ago, I was riding around the city of Hammond with my grandson in a car with, or my truck, and we took a ride over by Wallace Road, where the baseball diamond, where that big empty field is. And so we rode around, rode around, rode around, and we went out to South Hammond and went with to North Hammond, and he saw the baseball diamonds that are built there, and he asked me, now, he's twelve years old. He said, Papa, he said, how come ours don't look like that? I said, that's a good question, I'll go ask him and find out, and I'll let you know. So that's my question. We have a big field over there, and I was born and raised in Hammond, I've been here all my life, I've been here for seventy-one years. I have a big family, brothers and sisters, fifteen of us, and we all are very curious as to why we can't have that too. Well, that's my point of interest, and that's my question to the board.
Thank you, sir, we'll get you an answer. Okay, moving on, next speaker, Mr. George Stoya. All right, that ends public...
Mr. President, I'd like to go back into regular order of business, I so moved.
It's a motion by Councilman Higgs, go back to regular order of business, I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Markovich, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Back, normal, finish the...
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Mr. Cross, as it relates to the park, I think you're talking about Memorial Park, for a number of years, the park was not in the ownership of the city of Hammond, so therefore, I wasn't going to invest any other casino funding for the park. Now, currently, the park is back in the ownership of the city, I am working with the mayor to try to get some things done over there. So I look forward to any ideas that you may have, certainly, I know it needs a lot of innovation, a lot of things can be done over there, and I plan to meet with the park superintendent in the near future to work on some things over there.
Any other new and finished business? A motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Motion by Councilman Batali, second by Councilwoman Vanez, all those in favor?